Good evening. My name is Dante DiMato and I have the privilege of serving as president of the Bedford Men's Club. I'd like to welcome you to our Candidates Forum for the 2018 Town Council election. Town council members serve three-year terms. Six residents have declared their candidacy for three open seats and six will participate, all six will participate tonight. The Bedford Men's Club has been sponsoring this Candidates Forum for more than 12 years. As an organization serving the residents of Bedford, the Men's Club found it important that the voters have an opportunity to hear what candidates have to say on issues that affect our town and why they should be elected to Town Council. Our format begins with opening remarks from each candidate and then I, as the moderator, will ask questions and the candidates will have an opportunity to answer them in a timed format. This event is provided by Bedford Community Television and the members of the Bedford Men's Club. Tonight's program will last approximately 90 minutes. The Men's Club is a civic organization that helps to make Bedford a better place to live. Past and ongoing sponsorships include annual scholarships to graduating high school seniors from Bedford, Red Storm 509 and Tektonics Robotics Teams, youth sports such as softball, baseball, and basketball teams, Stand By Me, Bedford Community Food Pantry and Mission Garden, Destination Imagination, DECA Business and Marketing Club at Bedford High School, The Educational Farm at Chopra Hill, McKelvey Move-athon, and many more programs. The Men's Club donates many hours in the community at such events as this Candidates Forum, Old Town Day, Memorial Day Parade, and other events where we are needed. We normally meet on the first Monday of the month at Murphy's Tap Room and Carriage House here in town, sometimes on the second Monday due to holidays. We also create opportunities for our members to get together at various social events. Whether just moving to town or a lifelong resident of Bedford, the Men's Club is a great way for men over the age of 21 who live or work in Bedford to make new friends while giving something back to our community. Our club participates in a number of fundraisers each year. Our primary fundraiser is our annual Christmas tree sale located at the Village Shops of Bedford on Route 101. You can find more information about our club at our website, www.bedfordmensclub.com. Now I will outline the format of tonight's program. Each candidate will have three minutes for opening remarks. We've drawn numbers for the order of the opening remarks and the order will be reversed for the closing remarks. All questions will be from the moderator and I will alternate the order of who answers first. Please do not interject without being recognized by the moderator. After I ask a question, each candidate will have two minutes to answer. If you would like me to repeat a question, please ask. After all candidates have answered the question, there will be a one-minute opportunity for each candidate to provide rebuttal or additional information in the same order as the question was answered. At the end of the question-and-answer period, each candidate will have three minutes for closing remarks. A timekeeper will be in the back. A yellow piece of paper will be shown to indicate 30 seconds left. A red piece of paper will be shown to indicate your time is up. Please summarize quickly. Now we will start with questions. Excuse me, we'll start with opening remarks. Melissa.
Thank you Dante and thank you to the Men's Club and also BCTV for hosting this debate tonight. My name is Melissa Stevens. I've lived in town now for five years. I'm a lifelong resident of the state though. I graduated from UNH with a bachelor's degree in political science and communication. Other than my experience on the council, I also have experience working in state government. I worked at the State House and then after that I worked in state government relations. But perhaps my claim to fame is that I am the mom to two little girls, Lorelei and Juliette. And my oldest daughter is at Riddlebrook. My youngest daughter will be there next year. So I certainly have a vested interest in the town and have enjoyed serving the community thus far and I look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Good evening Dante. Thank you. My name's Julio Nunez. My background, I was born Dominican Republic, came to the United States by way of New York. Don't worry everyone, I was a Yankees fan before I got here. I was part of many programs, many local programs like the Police Athletic League and the Boys and Girls Club. Those programs really taught me what contributing to my community was like. Came from a lower-income background, so I reap the benefit of those programs. I finished my high school career in Nashua, high school education in Nashua, and I decided that I wanted to serve my country. So I joined the US Army as a military police officer. I served for 10 years, did one tour duty in Iraq. After the military, I owned a couple of successful businesses. Decided that the family life was more what I wanted. We moved to Bedford about four years ago. The reason I'm running is because I plan on staying in Bedford for the remainder of my life and I'm really looking to help make a difference in Bedford. So, thank you.
Matt.
Thank you Dante and thank you to the Bedford Spent Club as well as BCTV for hosting this debate tonight. My name is Matthew Sullivan. I am a relatively newcomer to the town of Bedford having moved here in 2006. Although new as a resident, I am not new as a friend of Bedford, having grown up in Amherst, lived in Manchester for the last 10 years, started my career in Bedford at a small startup, as well as, excuse me, my father having owned a business in town for the majority of my life. My family and I moved here, like many other families in Bedford, for the quality of life, the school system, and the peace of mind that comes with living in a premier community. My goal for running for Town Council is to make sure that the growth that Bedford has seen over the past 10, 20, even 25 years continues into the future. I want to make sure that we make smart fiscal decisions, preserve the growth, and are smart about how we go into the future. Thank you.
Thank you Johnny. And can I give my thanks to the Men's Club and BCTV for holding this debate, introduction to the candidates. I too am a native of New Hampshire. I've lived in Bedford for 36 years and prior to that I lived in Manchester. I'm a graduate of Dartmouth College and the Amos Talk School at Dartmouth. My business career has quite varied, ranging from commercial banking, investment banking, offshore fishing, and lastly owning and operating a advanced manufacturing facility here in New Hampshire which was sold to Japanese company a number of years ago. I've been active in a number of statewide and civic organizations, serving as a director of many of them, including the Boys and Girls Club of Manchester, First New Hampshire Banks, New Hampshire Housing Finance Agency, and I'm currently a member of the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission as well as a Town Counselor. And as all counselors here, we serve on a number of different committees within the community. I'm running again because I'd like to continue what we started three years ago, which is to help work with the town manager and the department heads to keep a fiscal, responsive, but service-friendly and heavy community. I don't think that many people realize the amount of time that people devote, both as employees and volunteers, to the service, to provide services to the other residents of this community and I'd like to continue to do so. There's always room for improvement and I think we have some ideas how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you Dante. Thank you to BCTV for having this forum, for you for moderating it. My name is Phil Griasso. I am a small business owner. I'm a father. I've served in the US Army. Instead of going to college and bogging myself down with debt, once I got out I went to a trade school. Back then they weren't really paying for a lot of college unless you bought into the GI Bill. Once I got out of the Army, I went to trade school. I got into real estate. I served as a state representative. I was on the Criminal Justice Committee. I was a member of House Leadership as a freshman liaison. I also served two terms in the city of Manchester as an alderman, where I was the Vice Chairman of Finance. I was the Chairman of Administration. So I've been to these meetings quite extensively and as the counselor said, it takes many, many hours. Most of us are currently skipping dinner to be here to do this. So the reason that I got involved, some friends of mine had mentioned that there had only been a few people to sign up. There was an empty slot and then if nobody filled it, then you really don't know what you're going to get. So being the civic-minded individual that I am, they'd asked me and I said if nobody signs up, I would. By that time, there was already three other people, but I'd already committed to them that I would. So here I am. They all seem like qualified candidates. It's going to be up to you to choose who you think is going to represent you best and I hope I'm one of those that's able to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you Dante and Bedford Men's Club as well as BCTV for hosting this event this evening. I've been a proud Bedford resident since 1999. I moved here with my family. I live in a multi-generational, multi-generational household, so I can identify and understand the problems that are facing our senior community here in Bedford as well as what we are facing as parents. I'm a proud mother of three beautiful children. I have a four-year-old, a three-year-old, and a 10-month-old. And I'm here this evening. Very happy to be here. But I really was inspired by my students. I'm a former high school teacher here. I opened Bedford High School. I was a very proud high school teacher. I was very proud to open the building. I was inspired by my students that I maintain excellent relationships with to this day to go out on my own. I'm a small business owner here in Bedford and I was inspired by them to also run for town office. It's something I've always wanted to do. I'm proud to do it. I'd like to get involved, not only for myself, but to be a voice and see the development of this community that I'm proud to live in. So, thank you.
We'll start with our questions now. "The town has received proposals to construct additional cellular communication towers. Some residents oppose those plans. There's been significant discussion, including during a planning board meeting on January 22. If you were the council's representative on the boards that oversee such projects, how would you balance the public's desire for improved mobile communication, compliance with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, including its Section 704, and residents' concern about safety and aesthetics?" We'll start with Julio.
Well, in regards to satellite communication towers and just communication overall, while it is a great luxury, I would first join any committee that has to deal with any of that. Not having much experience or not having much background on what the proposals are, it's pretty hard for me to give you a firm answer on what I would do, but I would first get a little more educated as to what the impact is, what the residents are looking for, and ultimately I would go with mostly what the residents would want because I'm looking to serve the people first.
Cell phone towers have definitely been a hot-button issue in the town of Bedford for the past few years, if I remember correctly. And understandably so, between what could easily be defined as almost reality television-level drama. I, for one, endorse the two amendments on the ballot this election period for the restrictions of zoning with regards to cell phone towers. I understand that there are dead spots in town that inhibit service as well as some concerns about public safety communications for the police and fire department. At this point though, I don't think that the town planning board and zoning board have done the complete due diligence needed to find the best solution, especially for those that have been presented to date. I would look for further investigation and understand that many residents are very vocal and want to maintain the character of Bedford and make sure that there's no cell phone towers going into residential areas and make sure that we find the best place to find the best solution for all communications involved.
I happen to serve as Chairman of the Telecommunications Committee. We struggle, the six of us, we struggle to understand what the needs are from the community. As a very vocal group that everybody's aware of, that basically views cell towers of any type as a streaming, strong health hazard. Unfortunately, we are still governed by the community by Section 704. They have FCC which does not allow us to do, make decisions based on health issues. We are trying to work with various groups in town, including the cell companies, the tower companies, to develop a program that makes sense for everybody. We have to meet needs of residents that are complaining about poor service. At the same time, the cell companies say they need to increase service because that's one of their mandates under the FCC. And we have the other group that basically doesn't want to have a tower around them for whatever particular reason. This has been a long process, but my experience is with dealing with some other communities and counties around the country that these processes can take years. With the changes of technology, we also have to keep up with some new ideas. It's an ongoing process. It's difficult and we need the help and the volunteerism from everybody in the community to get involved. Thank you.
Phil.
Well Dante, the way that I sort of approach it is I will always side with the residents of Bedford before I support the FCC mandate to put more cell towers wherever communication companies feel they should put cell towers. I think that's first and foremost. The people that live in those neighborhoods should have a say, not the people in Washington DC. That said, better communications is something that everybody wants and as the counselor just stated, there's got to be alternatives to a solution rather than just being mandated that you have to take them or you have to put them or the cellular companies have to create more. I just, I just don't really support that. You know, the FCC, they can pass whatever rules and regulations they want, but they're not residents of Bedford. So that's, my approach is always what's in the benefit and the best interest of the residents of the town, the federal government, to try to mandate or require cell phone companies to put up more towers because they need more service. That doesn't really do much for the residents of Bedford. I mean, you'll get some better coverage, but at what, at what cost? Whether it's a health risk or a health hazard, there's always debate on that. I know one of the proposals was to put it near the school and that caused a lot of uproar. To put it in somebody's backyard, you know, that's the neighborhood. If the neighborhood doesn't want it, they obviously are the ones that would not be getting the service or improved service. So that's, that's kind of the way that I view it. It's more for the residents than for the FCC.
I too would stand with the residents in the town of Bedford on this issue. There's still a lot of information that I myself don't have and don't understand currently. And in this role, I would want to get all of that information, fully understand all the options that are out there on the table. But I have definitely heard and seen the concerns of our Bedford residents, which is incredibly important, and I think their voices need to be understood and they also need to be recognized and acknowledged when it comes to the placement and alternatives that we're exploring for the cell phone towers.
You know, my heart really goes out to some of these neighborhoods. I was just talking to a friend who is a resident in one of the areas where a tower will be put and they're just really feeling beat up. If it's not this issue, then it's PFOAs. And you know, I can understand as a mom too how you want the best for your family and you sort of feel like some of this is completely out of your power and there's nothing you can do to change it. I think the town is taking really great steps in making smart decisions when it comes to the towers by setting up the study committee to look at where our issues lie and what we, what we can do to help people out who perhaps are having problems with service in town, but also taking into account, you know, those families who do not want to see the towers in their neighborhoods. So I think that was a great step. And then also, I think it's great that folks in town really gather together and they put together the ballot initiatives to change our zoning ordinance. You know, they were very vocal and, you know, really did their due diligence in showing up to the meetings, which I think is what folks need to be doing if they're not happy with something because you don't know what you're happy with and what you're not happy with unless you show up. And so that was really great that they were able to do that. And the planning board did listen. It was a tough meeting, but at the end of the day, you know, we do represent the folks in town and they listen to the residents and those, those are now being supported by the planning board. You know, I, I think that right now, time will only tell as far as what, what the future will bring as far as cell phone towers go with the FCC issues. But I think that pretty much having people involved is, is the key to this.
Right. Now, each of you in the same order will have an opportunity to add, one minute to add any rebuttal or any further information if you like. Julio.
Well, I'd like to just add, for the residents of the neighborhoods that these towers are being proposed to be put up, get involved. I know that there is a lack of involvement in, in the community. I feel like it's very important. Main reason why I'm here is because I care about the community and I want to be involved and I, and I want to help influence the decisions. So if this is going in your backyard, make sure you show up to these meetings and make sure you voice your opinion.
I also had the opportunity to talk to several residents who are part of that vocal group that are opposing the cell phone towers. I need to applaud their tenacity and their ability to bring this to the light and bring this to the council and get the amendments on the ballot. As I mentioned, I stand with them and look forward to finding a new process, to finding an agreeable solution for these cell phone towers in town.
I basically hold the same opinions of getting the residents involved and listening to their feelings. It's also very, very time-consuming and difficult to find a solution that works. I do want to clarify that one thing though. This is not a battle of Bedford versus the FCC. The FCC basically derives its power from the legislature, that's US Congress, and that's where it has to start if we want to have some major changes there. We can start at a local level and we have. We just have to keep following through.
I would agree with that statement, but I would also say that, you know, the residents of Bedford are the ones that need to be protected. Starting in Congress or starting here is great, but waiting for Congress to do something, we all know that that's, that's never going to happen. I would urge as many people as possible to come out and vote for the amendments and when one of these cell towers is going to go up in your neighborhood, you should definitely do something.
Not to sound like a broken record, but I too agree. It is up to you to get involved, to show up, to vote, to speak out, and let your voices be heard. Far too many people are writing in and posting things privately within, on Facebook. People don't understand what you're going through or what you want or don't want to have happen in this town unless you're here at these meetings and want to be an active participant in trying to make changes in our community.
I'm not going to sound like a broken record, but I, I am really interested in, in the vote on Election Day. So the same time that you all come out and vote for who your town counselor will be, also you need to go through the ballot and, and check those initiatives out and vote in favor or if you're against the changes to our zoning ordinance. So it's, it's really important issue and I urge you to make sure you're coming out and voting.
Thank you. We'll go to question two. "Perfluoro-octanoic acid, or PFOA, has been found in drinking water in some areas of town. Town manager Rick Sawyer has expressed frustration and disappointment that there has been further delay in the announcement of the contractor bidding process to extend public water to residents who've been on bottled water for nearly two years. Please comment on actions the town government has taken so far and tell us what additional actions the town should take to assist residents affected by these chemicals." Matt.
Congratulations to you Dante for pronouncing PFOA correctly. I'm not going to...
Chemistry hasn't been since high school.
Yep. Point of deja vu, it feels like that you asked that same question last year during the Men's Club debate. And unfortunately, it has been going on for even longer than that and my heart goes out to those affected residents. Where I live, off of Gage Girls Road, I am very close to a PFOA contamination site coming off of what's believed to be the Merrimack Transfer Station. I know that there's many more communities, especially off of Back River Road, South River Road, where the St. Cobain contamination is in effect. I can't understand or I can't believe what it would look or be like to live off of bottled water, have to carry those bottles in, have to purchase them on, on your own on a daily basis or weekly basis, especially in these freezing temperatures when frozen water in a basement could inhibit your convenience to a, an asset that we should just have at the, at the tap. I believe the council and many subcommittees have done a great job in trying to keep a spotlight on the issue and pressuring a resolution. Unfortunately, just with the way these things work, it could take much longer, but I think that continued spotlight, continued focus at various town meetings, council meetings, and subcommittees is going to be crucial in trying to get this issue resolved.
We take this issue very seriously and we have ever since it's come up. It's probably been the number one item that we deal with on a weekly or monthly basis. Rick Sawyer, as a town manager, has taken a very strong lead and stance with the powers that be. Powers that be in this particular case is not only St. Cobain, it's the Department of Environmental Services. That's the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. They control the groundwater requirements in the state. They also control where new lines are going to go and they've been pretty much in control of the St. Cobain negotiation situation. We all believe that this work would have been done probably a year ago. There's no excuse that it shouldn't have been. It's just been delayed for whatever, whatever reasons out there. It's, it's really unacceptable. It's been unacceptable to all the council members. Personally, I have an involvement in it, sort of like Matt's, where on a water line is prepared from the Merrimack Village Water District. Two of their wells are totally offline, putting questions on to the overall supply. Again, nothing has been developed to clean up those wells, to get them back in there, and to give some credence to having a reliable public water supply on this. So this is an area that we cannot ignore and we have to keep pushing.
It's going to be a very expensive project to deal with extending water service to areas of the town that currently do not have it. Being held up by the Department of Environmental Services and, and their control over groundwater and water lines doesn't seem, again, in the best interest of the residents of Bedford. The areas that are contaminated, that need to be cleaned up or paid for by whichever entities need to do that, I think that that's where we should be focusing on having more involvement from them in, in rectifying the situation that they have created rather than paying whatever fees or fines they may have been, been given. And I noticed that the other day in the union leader, the, one of the directors from the EPA came to talk about superfund sites. I happened to catch it. One of the things that caught my attention really was the fact that they had to fly here first class and gave, gave the excuse that it was a security issue. It's things like that that kind of make it difficult for situations like this to get dealt with because you have people in other areas of government that have their fiefdoms and their control over, over certain areas. I know quite a few people up in Concord and I think the, the issue should be taken up. I know quite a few people up in Concord and I think the, the issue should be taken up with them. Instead of taking it up with, you know, the Department of Environmental Services, I would go right for legislators, senators, governor, things like that. Departments usually have their own rules and their own agendas to follow and I, I don't necessarily follow that. I follow what the, the residents of the town need rather than what a department is going to tell me we can or cannot do.
Emma?
This is why I'm running, is because of this issue. I actually am one of the residents that has been on bottled water for over two years. I'm very frustrated and I'm very upset and that isn't to say that Rick Sawyer hasn't been an advocate for the 61 homes in our town. My issue is there needs to be more, that needs to be done. I think that it might be time for the town of Bedford to look to have a lawyer representing us in these communications with St. Cobain. They have contaminated and have trespassed on the residents of Bedford. Just as we are hearing complaints from the transfer station sites, people have violated our, has, have violated our communities and a large business is responsible for that. It is unfortunate, it is inconvenient, those are words that are very shallow in describing what we are going through as a community. I don't know when I will be on running water. I, it's a question mark and I think it is unacceptable. That is why I would like to be a voice up here at the town council actively involved in advocating for our community. Because it's not just my household, it's not just my neighbors, there are 61, in fact there are even more because they are being contested. I would like the town of Bedford to be actually requesting water samples of all of Back River Road, Liberty Hill Road, and I would also like it to be tested of all the MVD residents as well. It's not enough that we're just testing their wells and trusting MVD and DES results. We actually need to look after our own community and I would like to push to try and get the MVD residents or the Bedford residents that are on MVD water to get switched over to Manchester as well. So I think that is very important for us to explore and look into.
Melissa?
Um, you know, if you want to see Rick Sawyer look frustrated, talk to him about PFOAs, you know, the, the situation is just incredibly frustrating and at this point what we're really waiting for is for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to talk with St. Cobain and come to some sort of conclusion as to how they are going to put this new water line in. We were, I'm going to say fortunate in that St. Cobain did agree instead of using the water coming from Merrimack to use the, to use water from Manchester Water Works to service these other homes. That's great. I think a big part of that again was the neighborhood coming together and talking with Rick, talking with DES and really engaging folks and letting them know that they are not happy. We can do that on our end, Rick can do it, but it means a lot more when it's coming from a resident. And then I, the other part of this problem too is that we're still, you know, as Bill said, we're still waiting to find out what Merrimack's going to do with their other two wells and I know residents are frustrated about that. Again, as Bill said, they're worried about whether or not there will be enough water supply, knowing that there will be additional residents because of the contamination going, getting water through Merrimack too from other towns. And so that's another question too that we have had, that we have pushed for and we are just not getting an answer to.
Julio?
I live just north of the contamination zone. I'm more than happy to volunteer to have my water tested. I think it's a shame that we've had residents like Emma on bottled water for over two years or just about two years. I think it's shameful from St. Cobain's obvious standpoint, but even more from the Department of Environmental Services. I think there's no reason why we shouldn't have come to a resolution on this much earlier. It's mind boggling to me that we would have our residents in that kind of situation. I sympathize with, with people like you Emma who have been dealing with that and having young children, which I have myself. I, I don't know how I would deal with that. I don't know how I would tolerate that, but what I will say is, again, this is on the hands of the people of Bedford. If you are affected or if you are near an area that's affected, you need to show up, you need to voice your opinion, you need to make sure that you are heard. Our legislators and senators need to be flooded, not only with emails, but with phone calls and with personal visits to address these issues. This needs to be addressed as soon as possible and it is completely unacceptable that we have residents in our town living under these conditions.
Again, each of you have one minute for additional information or rebuttal in the same order. Matt?
To echo the sentiments of everyone else here, it's, we're in a complete agreement that this is a travesty for the residents who are affected. My main fear going forward is that a, a short-term resolution like additional water lines, additional well testing is only the short-term problem. Just due to the nature of chemical contamination, this could be a problem that lasts for five, 10, 15 years, starts to affect new and more neighborhoods and we need to take that into consideration as we raise our voices and demand a solution to the problem to make sure that we have long-term, not just short-term fixes.
Bill?
Of course it's a long-term problem. We have to look for long-term solutions. One of the problems we've faced and I think caused some of the delays is the fact that did not understand how extensive the pollution was. It was first discovered obviously in Merrimack and then Litchfield, very high concentrates. There are very quick solutions to that. Bedford's concentrations are much lower and they are spread out more. They've asked for different water testing going on just to determine the extent, but that would give us a basis to look for some longer-term solutions which still have to be addressed.
Phil?
I, I believe it's an unacceptable situation that anyone in town would have to live on bottled water. I mean, how do you take a shower for two years lugging your own water? That's, that's just not, not, it's kind of ridiculous to be honest and the fact that it's taken this long is, is even, even more so. That's, it really needs to be dealt with and to do that you need folks that are interested in the community, which are the folks that are here tonight and, and those out there that are, that are dealing with it, to get involved and like, like I said before, you need, you need to work with not necessarily the Department of Environmental Services, but you need to work with folks that can actually get things done.
Emma?
So I'm really appreciative of the work that Rick Sawyer has done. I know our neighborhood is, I know he is advocating for us, but the real reason why I'm here is we need to do more. Our neighborhood, I know Greenfield Farms as well, I, I believe I can speak on behalf of majority of those members. They have spoken up. I believe it's time for our voices to get louder. I believe it's time for the town of Bedford to now represent the interests of their residents in the fight against the Department of Environmental Service. It's time for us to actually set the standard as opposed to accepting it from the EPA, which is what the DES is quoting. We should not be okay with having a 70 parts per trillion found in our drinking water. It should not be okay. We need to look at ourselves as a community. It is time for us to stand up for ourselves, represent ourselves and I know that I will be fighting for definitely our neighborhood as well as all the residents within this town that are affected by any kind of chemical contamination and any sort of issues that are of major importance to them as well.
Melissa?
Um, I just really would like for DES and St. Cobain to get their plans to us. You know, for the most part, everybody has their bids out already for road construction and for this year and so each week that goes by, we just get more and more discouraged that we might not see this, this happen this year and that's what, of course, you know, we wanted this to happen last year. So, you know, DES and St. Cobain, just it's time that they get their act together.
And Julio?
I had the pleasure of speaking with Rick Sawyer this morning on my way into work. I believe that he also mirrors what, what we're saying here. He actually expressed that to me over the phone. We've had two years to work on this. It's, it's been long enough. I think we need to come to a resolution and we need to come to a resolution fast.
Question three. At the January 8th Planning Board meeting, the board recommended that the town council act in favor of the town's participation in the Becoming Age Friendly Program with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. What action should the town take to serve the needs of our growing senior population and our young adult citizens? And we'll start with Bill.
Unfortunately, I was not at that meeting, so I don't know what occurred. I know we're asked to, to put a letter of intent in or interest in so we could get, hopefully chosen to be one of the towns or be on a pilot project to put in some planning devices to address needs of senior citizens as well as younger ones. I don't, I do know in general that the approach is basically look at severe zoning changes in terms of density of housing, construction of housing, what is allowed, not allowed in terms of living for that. There would be a number of needs that have to be addressed in the senior side for ADA compliant type of sidewalks, passageways, parking lots, ramps, whatever. It's a major, a major undertaking for the community. But one of the items we've all, we've been talking about again for years and currently on the council and one of our missions is still to figure out how to get the Stevens Buzzwell Building completed and made functional for perhaps a senior community center in use. And until we address that particular need, maybe some others are going to go by the, by the wayside. It's a program that we have to look at as a town and really vet because I think there's a lot of, a lot of surprises in that simple program that's been presented to us.
Phil?
I have to be honest Dante, I, I'm not familiar with that meeting either. Can you kind of rephrase the question to be a little more succinct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my best. There was, there is a Becoming Age Friendly Program throughout the state and several towns have applied to be part of that program and the concerns are how do we serve senior, seniors in the community and how do we, how do we retain, attract and retain young adults?
Okay.
That was, those are the two focuses of, of the resolution.
Okay. As, as far as new construction goes, you have requirements for building ADA compliant entrances, bathrooms, things like that. That's nothing that the town is really going to be able to control. That's, that's more of a building code at this point. My focus on seniors would be not taxing them out of the community like other communities seem, seem to do. And retaining, retaining youth, you need to have things here that actually attract them, you know, growing businesses for employment, entertainment, those, those kinds of things that, that, that keep a youthful sort of base in, in town, but you also don't want to alienate the elderly population, so you, you need things for them also. I don't know that that's something that the town should be doing more than the free market should be doing. I think businesses that want to attract a younger crew of employees or entrepreneurs, that, that's nothing that, that the town is necessarily going to create. If it is, it definitely shouldn't be. It's not, it's not a function of government to create businesses or opportunity, business opportunities for entrepreneurs in, in the town, other than lessening regulations for businesses to, to be created. And as far as elderly goes, make, making sure that they're not overly taxed so that they can no longer afford to live in the community. Transportation might be an issue. I know that some sort of transportation system or like, like a Lyft or an Uber for, for seniors might, might be beneficial. I think there's actually a few organizations that, that do those things, so I don't necessarily believe that the town needs to be providing transportation, but it's definitely something to consider. I don't know that, I'm familiar enough with the program to say that I, that I could support it. I have to look a little more into it, so that's, that's kind of the way I view it.
Emma?
I too do not know about the program Becoming Age. However, I do understand the struggles that many senior citizens are facing, especially you touched upon Phil, taxation. We, it might be worth examining how seniors are being taxed within this community. I also hear from many residents when they are, they have family members coming to visit them or holiday times especially, looking at senior centers or with an aging parent, parental population, looking for sort of a recreation center for senior citizen community. I think the Stevens Buzzwell Community Center would be wonderful to increase our investment in as well as look into what kind of opportunities we can provide to residents with the Stevens Buzzwell Community Center. I know that the intentions are there to give back to the community. Let's, it's really time for us to make that happen. As for young adults, this is something I too am concerned well with. You see too many young adults moving towards cities and especially out of New Hampshire. It's been spoken out of the state. I know that our governor has spoken about it ad nauseam. I think it really comes down to looking at what we are putting and what we are attracting here in Bedford. We, there seems to be a lack of diversity when it comes to what we're providing, you know, some of the businesses that we have, you know, for just passive recreation. I'm thinking about shopping and other, I'm very excited for market in Maine. I think that could attract a younger audience potentially to come to Bedford. I think what's key is deciding who is going to, you know, open up shop. Also looking into creating a more cohesive and centralized town center is key for the town of Bedford and that's something that I would love to be a part of in developing as well.
Melissa?
Um, so I am familiar with the program and pretty much the gist of it is a, you know, looking at the quality of life in a town and, and seeing, you know, what demographics could be helped out a little bit more and there is a, a big component of it too is transportation. So we're talking about sidewalks, bike paths and things of that nature, which the town has talked about, I think, ad nauseam. But I, what I found to be interesting about the program is that we're looking at it happening almost in conjunction with the planning board, looking at updating the 10-year master plan that should be happening. You know, RFPs are going out very soon, sometime this month and then we'll get a makeup of different board members, members of the community together to really take a look at what we want to see in the future, in the next 10 years for the town of Bedford and, you know, certainly bringing in different demographics too. You know, we talked about looking at families, seniors and we do have a, a population of folks who have kids who have graduated and are still looking to stay in town for some time. So I think we're looking at, and millennials of course. So we're looking at really, you know, the town has an interest in, in really helping out all the members of the community. We've talked about Stevens Buzzwell, there is some issues there with funding, but I think that we can come up with some creative ways of getting some money for that building so we can get it up and running. I'm not sure if folks in town remember, but the house almost across from the library was gifted to the town, we turned it down. The proceeds from that house are actually going to a charity in New Hampshire and the town could actually ask for proceeds of the sale of that home as a grant and that would be incredibly helpful in getting that building up and running. So I think we're making strides and hopefully we'll see some more good things to come.
Julio?
Well, like Phil said, ADA compliance is, is what it is. I do believe that where we're not ADA compliant, we need to get there as soon as possible. In terms of the tax, I also, I would also like to sound like I'm echoing him in this. I, I do think we shouldn't be taxing our seniors out of Bedford. Regarding the community center, I currently work for an organization, for a nonprofit organization called My Turn, where we help youth develop post-secondary education and job skills. I think attracting certain types of companies and, and certain types of businesses would also help the youth stay and work in Bedford. I think that's very important. And overall, I think the attractions of Bedford is, is the only portion where I see a gap, where I see that, that young families have to go outside of Bedford in order to entertain themselves, obviously, in the cold. In the cold season, it's, it's much different. But Parks and Recreation, I would like to see that be developed more and, and be brought and be changed to a more family-friendly programs and events. So I, I, that's how I would help.
Matt?
While I don't know the specifics of the becoming age friendly program, I do know it in generalities, and I'll speak to that. On the elderly side of the community, it's a lot focused on accessibility, transportation, and the ability to live a quality lifestyle into the silver years of life. My own parents did their twilight years here in Bedford, and I can attest the fact that for someone without a car, it is hard to get around. Many of the things that come along with becoming age friendly in terms of sidewalks, bike paths, and things of that nature, I think would be smart in development in conjunction with much of the redevelopment that's happening in town, especially in areas around the Bedford Village Inn or down on South River Road, the, the Market in Maine. I'd be opposed to any type of holistic ordinance for sidewalks and accessibility throughout town as it just doesn't seem to make sense in all neighborhoods. On the other side of the spectrum is the, the younger generation, millennials, whatever you want to call them. As a whole, New Hampshire is one of the oldest, if not one of the, if not the oldest state in the, in the union, and I think it's become a complete problem throughout the state of how to attract and retain youth and talent. There's a great organization based out of Manchester State Work Play, and I think would be beneficial for the town to work with them to understand what we can do to attract more youth out of college graduation, retain that talent here in New Hampshire, and use that to grow Bedford.
Bill, would you like one minute to offer additional information?
No, I think we've covered this pretty well.
All right. Phil?
I guess the only thing I could really add is as far as attracting youth and, and employment, we have a notable resident, Dean Kamen, who does incredible things. He does them in Manchester. It'd be great if we can get him to do some of those things more in Bedford, like First Robotics, that, that kind of thing to a, attract more youth to the, to the town. As far as elderly goes, transportation is definitely an issue. Sidewalks and bike paths, I don't know, are necessarily their, their, their biggest issue rather than, than vehicle transportation to and from doctor's appointments. I know Meals on Wheels program is, is, is very beneficial. I like to see people and, you know, not be shut in, so. And as Julio said, as far as Parks and Rec, I don't, I don't think there's enough attention or enough promotion. There's plenty of great spaces in the, in, in, in town that could be utilized a little better. That might attract younger families.
Emma?
Thank you, Melissa, for sharing a little bit more about the becoming age program. I am especially interested in, you know, the transportation aspect because I do see that as an area lacking here in this town, as not just for elderly, but when, you know, in the mornings, looking at how kids get to and from school. Putting in the sidewalks between Bedford High School to McKelvey was huge. And I think it is worthwhile, especially knowing how active this community is. I see how beneficial it is. And I'm really excited to hear that when looking at the 10-year master plan, looking at the layout and construction of our roads and our current systems, I think that's incredibly important. So I am interested in learning more about that program, and I think it's actually critical to the development of Bedford.
Melissa?
Since I feel like we've talked somewhat about sidewalks and because we talked about them ad nauseam, really, I know I've said that word a lot lately, but, um, you know, if we're not talking about cell phone towers, we're talking about sidewalks and we're talking about repaving roads in town. But as far as sidewalks go, I really would just like to see a bond, us put this on the ballot as a bond initiative because there are so many people who have views, you know, one way or the other on sidewalks, and they are expensive. So I, you know, that would be something that I think we should look at doing soon and kind of putting that issue to rest anyway for some amount of time, hopefully.
Julio?
I, I would also like to echo what Melissa said in, in terms of putting it up for a vote in, in a bond initiative, much like we did with our roads where it was a, I believe it was a $30 million, $30 million bond that we put up. Being in a premier neighborhood, we have a pretty good rating. So I feel like it'd get very competitive and we'd get a pretty good rate for, for that bond. I'd also like to just emphasize the importance of, of the community center. I feel like it'd be dual purpose, you know, we, we could serve two communities at once, address the growing senior population, give them something to do with serving the community and the younger citizens, making them aware of what we have available in Bedford overall. So.
And Matt?
Not to harp on everything else that, that people said, but it, it is going to be critical in 2018 to incorporate this into the 28, the, the master plan as that comes up for renewal and, and review. Bringing it to bond will be huge, especially with the amount of money that it would cost and the debt load that is already placed on the tax rate. I think it's important to have this be a, a population decision.
All right, we'll go to question four. What do you believe are the highest priority town facility programs and why, such as fire department, police department, town offices, library, transfer station, or other facilities? And we will start that question with Phil.
I think the town's doing a pretty good job. I think that there's really not too many issues as far as buildings go. I think the water obviously is, is a bigger issue for the residents that don't have it. Placements of, of fired, fire stations, that, that's something that I would consider looking at depending on what areas aren't served or the response times to get to them. The, the police, they have a great presence out in the community. I think they're doing, that they're doing very well. The transfer station, I, I go there and bring my trash all the time, so I think it runs pretty efficiently. One thing that I, that I might want to look at is actually contracting with somebody to pick up recyclables rather than folks to have to bring them. The town might be able to make some money on that. But outside of that, I, I think the town functions pretty well. It's, it's a matter of being fiscally responsible with what you have. As far as the, the bonding goes that have been mentioned, I'm not a big fan of bonding things. The town is a pretty, pretty low amount bonded, so I, I think, to, to go back to, to the other question, I, I think it's definitely more appropriate to have the folks in town vote on that, which is the, the appropriate way to go. I'm glad that they vote on the budget. And the things that are, that are coming up in this, in this budget, they, they're kind of alarming. We might have a, you know, a thousand dollar tax increase, so that's one of the reasons that, that I'm here, and I'm, I'm glad Matt brought that up. So that's, that's something I think we all need to pay attention to.
Emma?
I too believe the town runs quite well. I know that it has been brought to our attention a few times to look at fire facilities, and it is, I think, worth looking into if we are adequately serving our town, especially given that it is so large, you know, looking into how the east side of Bedford community towards Amherst is being served by our police and fire departments. If they're getting pretty, like, lower timed responses to any calls that they have, I, I really think this is a great town to live in, and I think that we are able to serve the community quite well. But that is, I think, we, something we need to look into is the side towards Amherst if times are, you know, if it's, response times are high or if they are satisfied with them, especially also when it comes to fire service. One thing I would like to look at is, especially in light of activities that happened yesterday, is looking at our safety needs at our schools. I think it, I know it's a school budget issue to add a school resource officer, especially at the high school and at the middle school, but I think that is something that the town also needs to support and look into in this upcoming election and budget cycle.
Melissa?
I just want to clarify, we are just talking about the facilities?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, we are trying to, I think, finalize the facility study that was just done, and that's maybe a little bit of insider information. We voted on it a while back that we would put out an RFP for a facility study, and this kind of came to light as being something that was just a necessity when we were continually, continuing to talk about the fire substation. And then we have space issues, office space issues, that a lot of our departments have been making some complaints or I should say concerns about because we do have to keep a number of records on hand, you know, by statute. We have to keep these papers for so long, and so we do have a space issue. So we should be getting that report. I think we might even be getting it at our next meeting. No, it's not ready yet. Okay, so we'll be getting it probably next month then, and really taking a look at, you know, where we can expand, what we can do with the buildings that we currently have. I am always in favor of using what we have and not buying any more than what we really do need. So that will be an interesting report to, to read. I will say, you know, we've had some problems with our fields, our sports fields, and it looks like we're going to have to close one down for quite some time too because it is in disrepair. And so I, concentrating on that would probably be a necessity for this upcoming council because those fields do get used quite a bit. So as, in terms of facilities, that's something else that we really need to be looking at.
Julio?
I would be in favor of a substation for the fire department. I feel like our response times could be a little bit better. That's something that was spoken about in the last debate, and I'd be completely in favor of that. I, I do agree, we should be exploring what resources we have, what buildings we have available that we could possibly use, and I am completely in agreement with that. In regards to the police, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the atrocities that happened in Florida. I had the pleasure of speaking with Chief Breffonsky before I came here, and, you know, he, he reassured me that the police presence has been up in the school system, in, in the schools, and they're a lot more vigilant and patrol. But as far as the police department goes, I feel like they do an outstanding job. I feel like their response time is right on there. You know, an additional ambulance would, would be of great help to the community, though.
Matt?
There's a lot packed into that question. First of all, I'd like to thank Melissa for mentioning the facilities study. I know that was coming out in the near future. With Bedford at almost capacity buildout, there's not much space left for us to build new facilities, so it's all about expanding what we have and making best use of what's available. With regard to a safety complex substation, I know that a fire substation failed on the ballot a few years ago. It happened to be on the ballot at the same time as the road bonds, and that was probably an issue. The problem is, is that 40% of all public safety resource calls come out of 101 and South River Road due to the capacity in that area. Currently, there hasn't been a critical impact to response times, but definitely with the development of the Market in Maine area and potential workforce housing going into that area, I wouldn't be surprised to see that load tax our existing facilities even more. Once that facilities studies come out, I think it would make sense to reevaluate what a substation in that area would look like. With regards to fields, again, we don't have much space to build any new fields, so I think it may make sense into how to maximize utilization, whether it's turf existing fields or turf the fields that are going under repair in order to extend the life of them, adding lights to extend the daylight hours or, or capacity of those fields. That would be an interesting approach as well.
Bill?
All this, all this discussion is kind of interesting from the, from the outside. We are in the middle of the facility study. It should have been done by now. The decision's been made really to push it off until the next council and before we have any conclusions on it. I think we'd be very surprised what comes out of that. I am not aware of anything personally on that, nor to my knowledge would be Melissa or any of the other counselors with the exception of the chair lady. And so it's a little hard to comment or give the, the public a feeling of that. In general, we have to balance two things. We have to balance the needs of maintaining a high level of services from town government with the needs of our residents, taxpayers, who can only afford or feel they can afford so much. So it's a balancing act. All these things in government is, is a balancing act. There's a trade-off between the cost of providing these services and how much the services are adding value to the entire community, not just portions of it. And I think a lot of the discussion ends up being what's going to benefit this small segment of it. We have to look at the entire community's needs, and that's a very important thing to have. We talk about bonding. Well, let's, let's talk about next year's budget coming up. A good portion of your tax increase next year is due to a bond, due to a road bond coming in, and there'll be another one next year and another one on top of that. And those don't go away. They keep going. So you have to look at that particular basis and say, what is our discretionary spending and what can we do about it? If we suddenly go into a huge capital expansion program for whatever reason, then we're going to incur a lot of costs both currently and then down the road. It'll be burdened with them forever. So I think the people who haven't had experience dealing with the budgets and working with this thing have to understand that there's a constant trade-off.
I need you to summarize, please.
Thank you.
All right. Again, a minute to provide more information or rebuttal. Start again with Phil.
Just to keep going on what Bill's talking about, that's what happens when you bond. You wind up with, you know, debt service for, for quite a while. One of the things that I would like to touch on that, that Emma and Julio brought up was school safety. I know that today in the State of the State address, Governor Sununu had made a commitment of $20 million for school safety throughout the state. So I'd be looking to work with the governor's office in making sure that the schools are dealt with. It's, it's, it's really not acceptable that anybody can walk in off the street with a gun and just start shooting things up without somebody there to protect them. I thought it was kind of a shame that the, the coach threw himself in front of the bulletin, and if only somebody at the school had their own to be able to protect the students, that, that tragedy and many others could have been avoided. So that's, that's all I have to say. It's, it's a sad situation.
Emma?
I don't have anything to add to this other than it'll be interesting to see the results and hear the results of that feasibility study with the facilities and make a more, a better informed decision as to what we can do at that point.
Melissa?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Julio?
The only thing I'd like to add or echo is what Matt said, which is exploring, maybe resurfacing the fields. I, I live right next to a field that's resurfaced, and adding the lights to extend the hours of usage would also be, I feel like, a great use, so a great idea on that. Yeah, I'd be for that.
Matt?
I can't take full credit for that idea. I believe Crispin Dazian mentioned it last year, so I will give him where credit is due. Phil talked a little bit about the, the debt load that comes off of bonds. I believe with the current road bonds, our, our maximum debt load is going to be around 2021 and extended till 2028. Thankfully, our taxes stay relatively low and stable and have been due to the fiscal responsibility of the town. I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't impact the quality of life and public safety at the expense of being conservative with that budget. So any investigation and results to come out of the facility study should be examined closely.
And Bill? Anything further?
I have nothing, Matt.
Thank you. We've come to the end of the question and answer period. Now it's time for your closing remarks. The order for the closing remarks will be the reverse of the opening remarks, and you'll each have three minutes. So we will start with Emma.
I'd just like to say thank you again for this opportunity this evening to state my position on some really important issues that this town is facing. The cell phone tower, looking at the state of our facilities, thinking about the development and the direction our town and community will be going, and obviously most important to me, the PFOA water contamination that we have currently contaminating the citizens of this town. The question we have to ask ourselves is what will our town look like and what do we want our town to look like? And I choose to live here. And I choose to live here for several reasons. One, I really love it. I love the community. I am very fortunate to have opened Bedford High School. I was a proud high school teacher there. I chose to leave to follow my dream and start my own business. I have the support of the high school community as well as my former students and the parents of my former students, and I am very grateful for those relationships, and I hope that I represent them all well. I am a mother. I look to bring my children up in this community. It's wonderful, it's beautiful. I love my neighbors, I love seeing people all around town, and it's important to think about the new businesses that are coming in and looking at how we want our town to look. I think it comes down to a diversity of choice, a diversity of options, and also how we are going to make the best of what we currently have and how we can make it sing. Because one of my proudest times being a community member here is, in the summer, I like to go to the Market Basket Gazebo at the, the park that's right behind the library, and on Wednesday nights, there's old, they have music nights, and I sit there with my family, we bring our food, and it's actually one of the best things this town offers. And it currently has about twelve people that show up, and I'd like to grow that. I'd really like to grow the sense of community, and it really has, we have great people in it. We really need to bring each other together and celebrate the greatness of this community, and I see that Wednesday nights at six o'clock would be great to see everybody. Our old town days, they, we can make them bigger, we can make them better, we can be available to each other. We should show our town pride more often at those events and not just come out to air our concerns, even though that is what we are here to do. It is not just always about the road bonds, it's about coming together as a community, and I look to best serve the interests of our town and bring that out in the town of Bedford.
Phil?
Thank you. One of the reasons I put my name on the ballot, well, there's quite a few actually, bonding, facilities, all the things that we've talked about here tonight, and I hope that the folks out there got a good sense of, of where everyone stands. We all sort of, all feel the same that the town's in, in, in pretty good shape, but for me, the thing that got me the most was listening to or reading in the, in the paper that the town manager wanted to have an extra two million on the budget. The school board wants another couple million in their budget. We just did a revaluation, our taxes have gone up, they're potentially going to go up a thousand dollars in, in the coming year, and they'll continue to go up every year. One of the things that I'm focused on is, is fiscal conservancy. The town needs to focus on what it needs more than what it wants, and that's, that's sort of where we all focus our, our own home budgets on. I am involved in my community and I live here, so I felt it my responsibility to step up and, and give you a choice. I think you have a great number of folks up here to choose from, and I hope that I was lucky enough to be able to earn your vote. Thank you.
Bill?
Ken, thank you for the opportunity to join this panel. I think everybody here is showing their interests and qualifications. My approach to going and seeking candidacy for another term is to continue the work that has been done for the past three years in, again, getting a community and a town operation that is very, very service oriented, and all the employees understand that and work through that regard. We are very fortunate in all the departments we have. Yes, some could be improved, some are probably overstaffed or understaffed or overutilized depending on the particular time of year, what the, what the needs are, but in general, I think we strike a very fair balance. My main concern is, is maintaining a viable tax rate for our, our residents. We shouldn't get into a situation where we're spending a lot of money on new operations that we don't need, that aren't essential to the picket community, but might look good or somebody, make somebody feel good. It's a, it's a very difficult balance. I have that experience in working from it. I'd like to be able to continue to apply that experience going forward, and I appreciate your vote.
Matt?
Thank you again, Dante. Thank you, BCTV, and thank you Bedford Men's Club for this, this event tonight. Also, thank you to the other candidates. Without individuals like us, I'll pat myself on the back, we wouldn't have the activism and the involvement and the success that Bedford has had in the many years in the past and hopefully into the future. I did realize that during my introductions, the nerves got a better of me and I forgot to give a little bit about my background. My career has greatly been in high-tech startups with a undergrad in computer science as well as an MBA. I like to think I have a get-stuff-done attitude. I have to wear many hats, especially working in the high-tech world. Coming to the town council, I think an analytical approach will be very beneficial, especially in the budget process. And representing young families like many of us are, we are the future of Bedford. We moved here to be part of a premier community, a community that's the only AAA bonded municipality in the state of New Hampshire, which echoes how fiscally conservative we have been in the past, and hopefully we can maintain that into the future. My goal is to provide the services that the town needs, answer the issues that are facing residents such as PFOAs and cell phone towers, and make sure that we grow in a fiscally smart manner. There's a lot of development happening in town and a lot of develop, redevelopment opportunities that can hopefully alleviate a lot of the tax burden that some things like reevaluation and various tax rates, tax rates have had on our, our wallets and checkbooks. Also, I'd like to make sure that everybody knows that the election is on March 13th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Bedford High School off of Nashville Road. The following night is actually a, a budget meeting. We have the opportunity to get out and vote for both our representatives, our town council members, and to allocate if money is added or taken away from the budget, and I ask that every citizen takes advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Julio?
Thank you to the Bedford Men's Club. Thank you to BCTV, and thank you, Dante, for hosting this. Really appreciate it. I'm not a career politician. This is my first attempt at this. This is a stepping stone in a political career that I'm pursuing. My interest lies with my community and my family and the people. I will vote with the best interests of the people in mind if elected. I, I strive to make myself available to the people, and I, I think today, and, and as you can see, we have a great group of candidates here. I think anyone here would, would serve the community well. I ask that if you have any sort of interest in what's going on in your town, what's going on in your neighborhood, what's going on in your schools, that you please participate, that you please vote, that you please join these discussions because they are very important. That is the reason why I'm here, and that is the reason why we're all here. Again, thank you, Dante, and, and thank you all.
And finally, Melissa?
First, I just want to thank everyone for the past three years. I've had a great experience, and I hope you all have, too. I've enjoyed working with the residents, whether it be an issue with repaving your road or a down mailbox. There's just no question and, and no concern that is too small. I really have enjoyed helping you all, and, and I hope that you feel the same way. You know, I am running for reelection because I feel my work here is not done. I feel like we have a number of issues that we're still working through, and I would like to see them through. And then also, I, you know, like I said, I've just, I very much enjoyed this job, and I can't thank the department heads enough, for the employees, for all of their help that they've given me. We really are truly blessed to work for such a great town and, and for such great involved residents. I'll continue to work hard for you. I will continue to ask the very hard questions. I think it's something that I'm known for on the board, almost in a comical way, that I, that I ask many questions of our department heads, and I do that to ensure that I'm using your tax dollars wisely and sparingly, of course. So I, I hope that you've been happy. I hope you'll come out and vote for me on March 13th, and if you do have any questions for me, please reach out. My email address is melissastevensnh@gmail.com. I'd really like to hear from you. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our candidates for their participation tonight and for their desire to serve our town. Again, please vote on Tuesday, March 13th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Bedford High School. Thank you to everyone who helped manage tonight's candidate's forum, especially the staff at BCTV. Please check the BCTV program schedule and www.bedfordnh.org for rebroadcasting times and online streaming of this program. Also, please check the BCTV schedule for the candidates' one-on-one interviews. Thank you and good night.